And we're ready whenever you are.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Kathy, would you please follow the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Councillor Dilaba.
Here.
Councillor Fisher.
Yes, excuse me.
Councillor Kennedy. Councillor Powers. Councillor Riche.
Here.
Councillor Scamperley.
Here.
Quorum present.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss medical financial credit for employment history of a particular person or corporation that is leading to his appointment, employment, promotion, promotion, disponement, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
One second.
Kathy, would you please follow the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Councillor Dilaba.
Yes.
Councillor Riche.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Here.
Approved. I can see that he has joined us. Councillor Powers, could we do an audio check real quick, please? It appears you are self-muted. I can see that he's present in the room remotely, Mayor, but I don't have an audio on him. I apologize.
Let the record be quiet upon returning from executive session. All members of council are still present, and we do have action from the executive session to be read by Councillor Riche.
Resolution authorizing travel expenditures for the purpose of conducting in-person interviews for the position of city manager, whereas in accordance with C-18, the city council shall appoint a city manager who shall hold office during and at the pleasure of the council. And whereas in execution of the duty and obligation to appoint a city manager, the city council desires to conduct in-person interviews of qualified candidates, and whereas to facilitate in-person interviews, it is necessary to authorize expenditure of funds for expenses associated with travel and lodging. Now therefore be it resolved that the interim city manager is hereby authorized by the Augsburg City Council to authorize an expenditure of funds not to exceed $10,000 from account code A1670.498 for travel costs associated with interviewing city manager candidates.
I'll move that. I'll say that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Councillor Dilaba.
Yes.
Councillor Powers.
Here. Yeah, uh, yes.
Councillor Riche.
Yes.
Councillor Scamperley.
Yes.
Approved.
We have one public hearing tonight regarding a proposal, ordinance to We have one public hearing tonight regarding a proposal ordinance to lease municipal property at 334th Street basement for a satellite office of U.S. Congressman Felice Devani. It is going to be bill number 120, and I will open that to public hearing now. Anyone attending in person would like to speak, please come down. You have five minutes at the podium. Is there anyone remotely attending? I do not see any hands raised, Mayor. Right, clear this public hearing. Next, we have our consent agenda. The claims is enumerated in general fund warrant number 24-2022, the amount of $659,684.90. Library warrant number 24-2020, the amount of $0. Capital fund warrants number 24-2022, the amount of $0. And community development fund warrant number 24-2022, the amount of $75.98. And community renewal fund warrant number 24-2022, the amount of $0. As audited, be and the same hereby are ordered paid. I so move.
I'll second it.
Kathy, would you please call the roll? Mayor Skelly? Yes. Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved. We have three appointments tonight. I will make a motion to appoint, to reappoint Barbara Barlow and Catherine Ryan Bold to three-year terms on the Pride Publication Commission. Terms to begin January 1st, 2023, and end December 31st, 2025. I so move.
Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll? Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly? Yes. Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Approved. I will make a motion to reappoint Steve Slater to a three-year term on the zoning board. Term to begin January 1st, 2023, and end December 31st, 2025. I so move.
Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll? Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly? Yes. Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved. I will make a motion to reappoint Edward Dana to a five-year term on the Board of Assessments and Review. Term to begin January 1st, 2023, and end September 30th, 2027. I so move.
Second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll? Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly? Yes. Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Approved. This brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
Man?
I just had a... Go ahead. Maybe you have the same question.
We're just gonna move to bill number 122. The lease of municipal space requires six votes, and since we don't have six members present, we're just not able to move that this evening. So just move to item number two, bill number 122, if that's okay.
Could you read that one for us?
Have a... This is a resolution calling for a public hearing and public notice on a proposed ordinance amending chapter 149 of the City of Augsburg Municipal Code entitled Parks.
I'd like to move that based on the summary statement. Is that all right?
Yeah. Then the public hearing would be January 9th at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Kathy, would you please call the roll? Mayor Skelly? Yes. Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved. Our next item of business will be read by city manager or city controller Angela Gray.
This is a resolution providing for public notice and public hearing with regard to an amendment to the administrative regulations.
I'll move that. Did you...
Second it?
Could you explain it to us briefly?
Sure. Previously, your administrative regulations as far as employees, employee reimbursements go were based upon for meals, an index rate annually. So we're changing that reimbursement to coincide with the federal travel per diem rates, which run from October to September each year. And then the administrative regs spoke specifically to mileage at the rate that the IRS would reimburse, but the actual rate, I believe, was in there. This year, the IRS changed the mileage reimbursement in July 1, 2022, but the administrative regs didn't have room to reflect that. So in section six, it's just stating that that will be equal to the IRS mileage reimbursement rate. Therefore, if they change it mid-year, they seldom do, but once in a while they do, we can automatically reflect that in our reimbursement to the employees.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Kathy, would you please call the roll? Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly, I'm sorry. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly? Yeah. Approved.
I voted twice, so let's...
You did, sir. I apologize. I skipped Counselor Powers. I apologize.
Just reaffirm it.
A resolution to establish the official newspapers for the publication of local law notices and other matters required by law to be published by the City of Augsburg for 2023.
Move that. I'll second it. My only question is, last year, we prioritized, we had North Country, now North Country this week first, because they're... They have such greater circulation, so I didn't know why it was changed, the order. Was that intentional, or was that...
Andrew, may I?
Yes, please.
The, the order didn't change, sir. That's the way that they've been listed. Last year, council had a motion and a second and approved to prioritize North Country this week as the publication that we would use whenever possible.
So is that...
They're in no particular order on your resolution, sir.
So is that the present policy, or do we need to do that?
In 2022, if council wishes to do the same, you're certainly welcome to make that motion. I think staff does, because it's less expansive, greater circulation, so...
Okay, that's fine.
Absolutely, always, sir. So Kathy, would you please call the roll? Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly? Yeah. Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Approved. Our next item of business will be read by city controller Angela Gray.
This is a resolution designating the official city bank depositories for 2023.
I'll move that. One second. All these four have a presence here. I should know that, but they do, right?
Currently, Community Bank and the New York Class Public Trust are our primary. We have had business with the other two in the past, and we currently do not. But the option to do so is there. For instance, Key Bank has been, we used them a couple of years ago for some leases of large equipment.
Okay.
Thank you. Kathy, would you please call the roll? Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly? Yeah. Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved. Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
A resolution designating the 2023 city council meeting dates.
I'll move that. Second.
This is just the same as it has been. The second and fourth Monday is at 6:00 p.m.
Yep. I'm fine with one meeting in July and August, but I don't know what everybody's pleasure is.
I'm fine with that, too.
That's what you used to do, didn't you? Yeah, I think, let's do that. Just do the first, or the second Monday.
So the 10th and the 14th?
10th and 14th. I'd make that. Do we need a, a motion to amend, or is that understood?
No, you need a motion. I'll second it.
Um, so just, Kathy just has a comment to make.
So just so council is aware, that is a change to the administrative regs, which is done by ordinance, which does require a public hearing. So...
I would just keep it like it is.
It...
We'll just keep it like it is.
There's the option that staff could prepare that. We could prepare to make that change and change the administrative regs back, or there's always the option that council can just voluntarily cancel that second meeting in advance.
Let's do that.
Okay. Kathy, would you please call the roll? Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly? Yes. Counselor Dilaba?
Yep.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Approved. Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
A resolution authorizing the interim city manager to enter into a professional services agreement for accounting services with Angela Gray CPA and the firm of Gray and Gray and Associates Certified Public Accountants.
I'll move that. I'll second. I think Angela and her firm has done an outstanding job for us. We're lucky to have their services, and I'll support this wholeheartedly.
Yes, agree. Very much. You came at a time when the city was in need, and you stuck with us, and we all appreciate it. Kathy, would you please call the roll? Mayor Skelly? Yes. Counselor Dilaba?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved. At this time, I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.